It is 6 o'clock. We have a couple people still out in the lobby checking in, so we're going to give them a few minutes. As soon as they make their way in, we'll get the meeting started.
Creating your first video? You should start with the music. Go to artlist.io and get high-quality music and sound effects for any...
Thank you all for coming. I'm calling this special meeting to order at 6 o'clock, or at 6:06. My name is Brian Medved. I am the board president. Onstage with me, we have Tom Barney, and we have our attorney, Kevin Pollard, and our district administrator, Dr. Chris Reuter. As board members, we will be participating like everyone else as constituents and part of the electorate. This is not a typical board meeting. This is just a special meeting. And I think it's important for me to explain a little bit of why we're here tonight. We had an annual meeting, and part of the annual meeting was to decide on the wages of the school board. And when we went through the procedures, I inaccurately went through the procedures, and we ended up not passing anything. So there was literally no wages for the school board. We thought, there was nothing nefarious about what we were doing. I just made a mistake in the order of how I presented the vote, and we ended up not voting on anything. So we had an open... We didn't have anything resolved, basically. So we're here tonight just to handle that one issue. And I'm hoping that we can have a little bit of grace on me for making a valid mistake, and we can just get through a discussion on what the wages for the board will be, and we can all go back to the important things in life, like spending some quality time with our families, or watching the Packer game. Everybody that is an electorate should have a packet. We will be using these for the voting procedures. And the first vote will be to elect the chair, so please use the ballot that we're going to tell you to use at the time we tell you to use it. And then we'll ask you to use the buckets in front. Write down a name, or a yes or no, depending on what the vote is, and then you will come up and drop it in the bucket. And then we will physically count all those ballots in front of everyone. Just so everybody's aware, the state qualifications necessary to vote at this meeting: Every US citizen age 18 or older who has resided in the Germantown School District for at least 28 days before this meeting, an eligible elector under Wisconsin State Statute 6.02. However, the following persons are not to vote at this meeting: Any person who is incapable of understanding the objective of the elective process or who is under guardianship unless the court has determined that the person is competent to exercise the right to vote. Also, any person convicted of treason, felony, or bribery unless the person's right to vote is restored through a pardon or other applicable law. Since the chairperson is required to administer the oath for any person attempting to vote, we won't need that tonight because it looks like everyone has signed in. All right, we need a chairperson to moderate tonight. I did it at the last meeting, and I'm volunteering myself to do it again. So I will accept nominations for the chairperson for this meeting. Do we have any nominations?
Hi, I nominate Brian Medved to be the chair for this meeting.
Could you state your name?
Sarah Larson.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have a second? Could you state your name?
Eric Brown. I'll second.
Okay, well, open this up for discussion. If anyone would like to speak on the topic, please come down to the microphone. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. We will take the vote on the ballot that says ballot-elect Chair, and you will vote yes or no for Brian Medved, myself. And then drop them in the buckets up front, please. You can vote yes, no, or abstain. I'm sorry. Chair or abstain?
Yeah. Yeah. We have a record recorded. We have a record this way. I think we have to do it this way. We have to do it this way. We have to have the record. Yeah. Chris? Can we walk to the back? You could have walked to the back. We should have somebody in the back, so they don't have to come up front.
Right. I get it. Has everyone had a chance to vote? Okay, last call for votes. We're going to start tallying. Yes, yes, one. Yes, two. Yes, three. No, one. Yes, four. Yes, five. Yes, six. Yes, seven. Yes, eight. Yes, nine. Yes, 10. Yes, 11. Yes, 12. Yes, 13. Yes, 14. Yes, 15. Yes, 16. Yes, 17. Yes, 18. Yes, 19. Yes, 20. Yes, 21. Yes, 22. Yes, 23. Yes, 24. Yes, 25. Yes, 26. Yes, 27. Yes, 28. Yes, 29. Yes, 30. Yes, 31. Yes, 32. Yes, 33. Yes, 34. Yes, 35. Yes, 36. Yes, 37. Yes, 38. Not the right ballot, no vote. Yes, 39. Yes, 40. Yes, 41. Yes, 42. Yes, 43. Yes, 44. Yes, 45. Yes, 46. Yes, 47. Yes, 48. Yes, 49. Yes, 50. Abstain. Yes, 51. Yes, 52. Yes, 53. Yes, 54. Uh, blank ballot. Yes, 55. Yes, 56. Yes, 57. Yes, 58. Yes, 59. Yes, 60. Yes, 61. Yes, 62. Yes, 63. Yes, 64. Yes, 65. Yes, 66. Yes, 6... Wrong ballot. No, two. What is it? 66? Yes, 67. Wrong ballot. Wrong ballot. Wrong ballot. Yes, 68. Yes, 69. Yes, 70. Yes, 71. Yes, 72. Yes, 73. Yes, 74. Yes, 75. Yes, 76. Yes, 77. Yes, 78. Yes, 79. Yes, 80. Yes, 81. Yes, 82. Yes, 83. Yes, 84. Yes, 85. Yes, 86. Yes, 87. Yes, 88. Yes, 89. Yes, 90. Yes, 91. Yes, 92. Yes, 93. Yes, 94. Yes, 95. Yes, 96. Yes, 97. Yes, 98. Yes, 91. I'm sorry, 99? Yes, 100. Yes, 101. Yes, 102. Yes, 103. Yes, 104. Yes, 105. Yes, 106. Yes, 107. Yes, 108. Yes, 109. Yes, 110. Yes, 111. Yes, 112. Yes, 113. Yes, 114. Yes, 115. Yes, 116. Yes, 117. Yes, 118. Yes, 119. Yes, 120. Yes, 121. Yes, 122. Yes, 123. Yes, 124. Yes, 125. Yes, 126. No, three. Yes, 127. Yes, 128. Yes, 129. Yes, 130. Yes, 131. Yes, 132. Yes, 133. Yes, 134. No, four. No, five. Yes, 135. Yes, 136. Yes, 137. Yes, 138. Yes, 139. Yes, 140. Yes, 141. Yes, 142. Yes, 143. Yes, 144. Yes, 145. Yes, 146. Yes, 147. Yes, 148. Yes, 149. Yes, 150. Yes, 151. Yes, 152. Yes, 153. Yes, 154. Yes, 155. Yes, 156. Yes, 157. Yes, 158. Yes, 159. Yes, 160. Yes, 161. Yes, 162. Yes, 163. Yes, 164. It said the word "chair" on it. Yes, 165. Yes, 167. 66, I apologize. Yes, 167. Some math teachers in the back can help me tomorrow. Yes, 168? Yes, 168. Yes, 169. Yes, 170. Yes, 171. Yes, 172. Yes, 173. Yes, 174. Yes, 175. Yes, 176. Yes, 177. Yes, 178. Yes, 179. Yes, 180. Yes, 181. Yes, 182. Yes, 183. Yes, 184. Yes, 185. Wrong ballot. Yes, 186. Yes, 187. Yes, 188. Yes, 189. Abstain. Yes, 190. Yes, 191. Wrong ballot. Wrong ballot. Wrong ballot. Yes, 192. Yes, 193. Yes, 194. Yes, 195. Yes, 196. Yes, 197. Yes, 198. Yes, 199. Yes, 200. Yes, 201. Yes, 202. Yes, 203. Yes, 204. Yes, 205. Yes, 206. Yes, 207. Yes, 208. Yes, 209. Yes, 210. Yes, 211. Yes, 212. Yes, 213. And yes, 214. We'll also read the abstentions.
Can I ask a question? So for the people to preserve their vote, the ones that have used the wrong ballot, will you keep that number aside and then know that in the...
Yeah, I think Sarah's question is if people who use the incorrect ballot, how can they get that back for vote number one? Go ahead, Sarah.
So with that, will you keep that number aside and let them alter their next ballot? And so on what would now be ballot number two for them, they would strike it and write ballot number one. And theoretically, then, the number that you have there should match whatever comes up then in the next count. Or will you issue a new packet of ballots to those individuals?
We could either do that or give them a new packet.
And if you issue a new packet, I'm assuming you would request the remainder of the existing packet back?
We'll complete the count of the abstained ballots first, and then we'll see how many inaccurate we have of that. And then we'll ask anyone to come forward with their packet. If they are missing ballot one, we'll replace your packet for you. Okay, thank you.
Are you okay with that?
Yes. Okay. Abstain one. Abstain two. Abstain three. Abstain four. Abstain five. Abstain six. Abstain seven. Abstain eight. Abstain nine. Abstain 10. Abstain 11. Abstain 12. Abstain 13. Abstain 14. Abstain 16. 15, I apologize. Abstain 16. Abstain 17. Abstain 18. Abstain 19. Abstain 20. I'm just... Blank ballot, but it's in the abstain. Abstain 21. Abstain 22. Abstain 23. Abstain 24. Abstain 25. Abstain 26. Abstain 27. Abstain 28. Abstain 29. Abstain 30. Abstain 31. Abstain thirty-two. Abstain thirty-three. Abstain thirty-four. Abstain thirty-five. Incorrect ballot. Abstain thirty-six. Abstain thirty-seven. I'm abstain thirty-eight. Oh, I apologize. Got it done. Abstain forty. Thirty-nine, I'm sorry. Abstain forty. Abstain forty-one. Abstain forty-two. Abstain forty-three. Abstain forty-four. Abstain forty-five. Abstain forty-six. Two fourteen, yes. Four, no. One, five, no. Nine wrong ballot, one invalid, one blank ballot. Forty abstentions, one incorrect ballot of the abstentions. So the yes votes for two ten.
Okay, I'll read through the tally. We have two hundred and fourteen yes. Five no. Of those, we had nine wrong ballots. One invalid and one blank. We had forty-six abstain, and one of those was blank, and one was the incorrect ballot. So Brian Medved is recognized as the chair for this meeting. So we will move on to item three, resolution of G four. Approval, salaries and expense reimbursement for school board members. Resolution G four to approve salaries and reimbursement. I will entertain the motion. Mr. Pollak.
My name is Tracy Pollak. Full disclosure, I am a member of the Germantown School Board, and also on the evening of October twenty-third, I'm the one that read this resolution to begin with. I move that the following resolution be adopted. Now therefore be it resolved that the electors of the Germantown School District, Washington County, State of Wisconsin authorize that the school board salaries shall remain at five thousand four hundred eighty dollars annually for each school board member. Be it further resolved that school board members shall be reimbursed by the district for the payment of actual and necessary expenses of a school board member when traveling or performing duties outside of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. With the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Sarah Larson with the second?
Yes, second.
Please come forward.
I move to amend the motion by replacing the annual salary of five thousand four hundred eighty dollars for all board members with a new annual salary of one thousand four hundred for all board members. This salary is equal to thirty-four hours of estimated meeting time at the current average hourly teacher compensation in the district of forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Melissa Garvis.
Thank you, Melissa. We have an amendment to the original motion. Do I have a second? Could you please state your name? I'm sorry. Thank you, William. So first, we will be voting on the amendment of the original motion.
Point of information, I'd like to give a history of the school board salaries.
You're recognized.
The school board salaries for two thousand six, two thousand seven were established at the October ninth, two thousand six annual meeting and voted the same at the two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and two thousand nine annual meetings. At the two thousand ten annual meetings, the salaries were increased from thirty-five hundred dollars for each member to four thousand dollars. At the two thousand eleven annual meeting, the amounts were voted to remain the same as prior year. At the twenty twelve annual meeting, the amounts were voted to remain the same as prior year. At the two thousand thirteen annual meeting, the amounts were voted to be five thousand dollars for each board member for the twenty-three, excuse me, twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen fiscal year. At each annual meeting from two thousand fourteen through two thousand seventeen, the amounts were voted to remain the same as prior year. At the two thousand eighteen annual meeting, the amounts were approved as follows. A uniform increase for all board members from five thousand to five thousand four hundred eighty dollars, and the special functions, half-day functions, and mileage reimbursement rates remained the same. At the twenty nineteen through two thousand twenty-two annual meeting, the amounts were voted to remain the same as the prior year. Thank you.
Thank you. We will open it up for discussion on either the amendment or the motion. Anyone would like to discuss? Please come to the mic. Recognize Ms. Larson?
I would like the electorate to recognize that what they are basing their calculation on is not an accurate representation of the board members' time. To say that you are only going to compensate them for the meetings, what you don't see is the amount of closed sessions, expulsion hearings. If there is an interview panel taking place in the district, they may be taking a PTO day from their regular job to serve on that interview panel. There are school functions that they attend. Not to mention, these board members don't get up there and just get their packet in their email and sit up there blind. They're spending at least probably seven hours per packet of research and discussion. They may have questions. Anybody on the finance committee? Do you realize that they get a listing of every expenditure that has been made for the month, and they go line by line and review that and question the charges to see if they're valid? So to say that they're doing an estimate of thirty-four hours is a far cry from the reality of what our board members provide to this community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. William Walter, Germantown High School, class of two thousand twelve. A famous adage states there are two kinds of people in this world. Those who think, I don't want anyone to suffer like I did, and those who think I suffered, so why shouldn't they? In this situation, I personally find the reverse can be true. I was fortunate enough to receive a top-of-the-line public education from this very district, this very school, unfortunately before this very theater, as beautiful as it is, was built. But I hope future students are afforded the same, or preferably better, opportunities than were afforded to me, such as this. Unfortunately, district leadership appears ready to take us down a different path. Many of you, especially if you've been attending school board meetings the past few years, are familiar with our paper problem. While this may seem innocuous, I believe the example serves as a perfect microcosm for the problems within our district. The effort to save on paper costs led to the district running out of paper before the end of the school year. Teachers were told to stop printing in April. Remind you that school ends in June. Fortunately, parents, as they tend to do, stepped up to supply our teachers. We have no money for classroom materials, no money for teachers, no money for students, but plenty of money to pay our board significantly higher than neighboring districts. Germantown, as was noted, board members are paid five thousand four hundred eighty dollars per year. Grafton, their board makes fifteen hundred. Cedarburg makes nine hundred. Slinger is paid one hundred and fifteen per meeting, while Mequon, Thiensville, and Wawa Tosa pay their board zero. Nothing. Nada. If our board's pay was in line with these districts, many of which are utilized for comparison purposes when the topic of teacher pay is discussed, we could save one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars over the next five years. We could purchase plenty of paper, other educational materials, playground equipment, water fountains, smart boards, any number of things our students, our children could be utilizing to enhance their educational experience. Luckily, parents through PTA funding have provided these tools to our students as the district refuses. Now, I hear a number of proud fiscal conservatives, self-appointed budget hawks enthusiastically analyzing every single dollar within our schools have gone silent. Or worse, they're vocally supportive of the disproportionately over-inflated board pay. Personal friendships and pockets should not stand above public education. So let's run through the numbers. Twelve monthly meetings, estimated around two hours per meeting, plus three committees per member, and four and a half meetings per committee at forty-five minutes per meeting, equates to approximately thirty-four meeting hours per year. Fifty-four eighty divided by thirty-four is an astounding one hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighteen cents per hour. Teachers, on the other hand, with a hundred and ninety contractual workdays at eight hours per, leads us to forty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents per hour. Friendly reminder, this calculation doesn't count the hundreds of hours per year our teachers spend preparing, grading, lesson planning, responding to parental emails, et cetera, at home. It should be no surprise to anyone in this room that we've lost more than thirty teachers with a combined three hundred-plus years of experience since January first of this year alone. Do you believe elected bureaucrats are worth four times more of our tax dollars than the educators we trust with our children, the people preparing our kids to be the future of our community? I don't. Stand for our students, stand for our teachers, stand for our schools, stand for Germantown. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Larson.
As we know, information can be selective.
Hold on one second. That point of order is sustained. We'll move on to the next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Emily Blanchard, and I am a Germantown resident. I have children at Kennedy and at County Line. School board members should be compensated fairly for their work. Board members put in extra hours outside of their meeting attendance for the benefit of the district. But those two statements about school board members are also true for our teachers. Our teachers should be compensated fairly for their work. Our teachers put in extraordinary amounts of extra hours and their own money for the benefit of students and the district. As a former teacher, I can attest, they are putting in hours of unpaid prep work to create lesson plans, to grade assignments, to implement new curriculum, and to communicate with parents. As an aside, I have emailed teachers and received responses late at night, early in the morning, on the weekends. I have emailed board members and received no response. Average teacher pay in Germantown is about forty-one dollars an hour. The previous board salary averaged a hundred and sixty-one dollars an hour. If the board feels that forty-one dollars is a fair hourly compensation for our teachers, given all the extra work that's required of them, then that rate is a fair hourly compensation for the work of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Brad Sherrick, Germantown, parent of a ninth grader. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards recognizes that the annual meetings are, among other things, an opportunity for the community to critique the operation of a school district. On October twenty-third, a group of citizens came to the annual meeting to send a message that they were unhappy with the performance of the board, and the outcome of that meeting was clear to anybody in the room. Rather than accepting the recorded vote from that night, the board used a technicality to bring us here tonight. Let's be honest, we did not need to be here. The board can point to advice of legal counsel, but no one has yet explained, to me anyway, why a strict adherence to Robert's Rules of Order is essential. To me, it seems like Wisconsin Association of School Board guidance and your own board policy indicates that you have had flexibility in how you could have handled this. I firmly believe that the board made a choice to revisit this issue, and in the process, you've told us what your priorities are. I'm sorry if you feel that is an unfair characterization, but looking around the room, it's clear that I'm not alone in that opinion. Germantown has a vision to be the premier district in the state, but we continue to lag behind our neighboring districts on a number of DPI report card metrics. Over the last six years, we've made no progress, and perhaps even lost ground relative to our peers on achievement, growth, on-track to graduation, and overall scores. We are not going to get where we want to be by doing the same things over and over again. Our action this fall is meant to send the message that the status quo is no longer acceptable. While I am in favor of paying board members a fair salary, to that, to me, that is secondary to what we're doing here. I'm asking the board to prioritize our teachers, our staff, and our students. Stop micromanaging the professionals you've hired to run our district and let them be the experts that they are. Stop with the book bans. Stop spending your precious time looking for DEI, CRT, and SEL bogeyman in our teaching materials. Instead, use that time to work on strategy, develop an action plan, and execute it. We need lofty goals. Your role is not just to make sure the district is running well. Your role is also to help set a tone for the district, to inspire the district to achieve its vision. It seems to me that you are not providing that inspiration. If you don't want to do it or can't do it, please step aside and let somebody else try. Voting in any way to reinstate the board's salary is a vote against our teachers and a vote for the board's misplaced priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Dominic D'Amico from Germantown. I have, my children went through this, this school district and have successfully gone on to professional careers. I have two grandchildren in this district right now, and I really care about what they are going to have to do and what they are going to experience in their time in this district. As far as the sal, comparing the teacher's salary with what the school board gets, I'm not really impressed with what I've seen lately in children coming out of the education system anywhere in this country, first of all. Second of all, gentlemen, regardless, ladies, regardless of what happens here tonight with the vote for salary or cutting your salary, I hope that you all stay, do the job you were, you were elected to do. You weren't hired to do this. You were elected by a majority of the people that voted for you, which means those people want you to continue with this job. There are certain factions here tonight who are hoping that you resign so that they could have special elections to get their candidate on the school board to revisit all the garbage that you guys voted down last year and over the last two years. Just stay on the job. Do it for nothing if you have to, but don't let them beat you like this.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Matt Larson. I am a, husband of a former school board member and proud father of a, of a school teacher who was an intern here in Germantown and is also currently teaching in another district. What I notice when most politicians and people who are supporting progressive ideas tend to do is cherry pick the information they provide. You cannot compare a school board member to a teacher. Teachers tend to get a very lucrative insurance program and other benefits. So we're comparing apples and oranges. At ease. I will tell you right now that I pay for all of my insurance. Okay? I don't have a Cadillac program. As you were. I stand corrected. Then don't interrupt me while I'm talking. Menominee Falls, five thousand dollars per board member salary. Sussex, five thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars for board member salary. Elm Brook at four thousand. West Bend, five thousand. Madison, eight thousand dollars.
I, I don't think that's really the topic we're here to debate today, but certainly what happened at the last meeting, the result of the last meeting was that there was no resolution passed for board member compensation.
Okay, because the board did not follow the order, we have to have another meeting. Okay, I'm just trying to understand this, because to me, this is kind of a waste when we're worried about buying paper. I'm hearing we can't even afford paper, but we're going to have meetings, which I'm willing to bet the school paid for the paper that it's being used on. I just would like, I mean, I guess I'm just not smart enough to figure out that. It just doesn't make sense to me. Let's hold a meeting so I can get my pay back. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Judy Scharfenberger and I'm the proud mom of a senior LGBTQ plus senior here at the high school and a special education student, freshman. I'm in touch, embarrassed to admit that this is my first time at a school board meeting, in part because I'm consumed with volunteering for my children's youth leadership organizations. I volunteer somewhere between four and six hundred hours a year, traveling around the state, offering educational sessions to youth on how to properly run a business meeting, using Robert's Rules of Order, planning special activities, putting together budgets, running special committees, and teaching them how to be exceptional leaders for our future. I receive zero compensation for the many hours that I spend, receive zero reimbursement for the thousands of miles that I put on my car. It's been approximately fifteen thousand so far, just this year alone. Why do I do this? Because I'm passionate about these kids. I want to see them succeed. I love the work that I do and I'm responsible for the well-being of every single member of their organization. They are the reason that I give as much as I do and not for one second would I expect to receive a dime of compensation. I will never take money for an organization that provides such a tremendous opportunity for them, and I don't blink an eye about the thousands of dollars that I spend a year on these kids. So I ask the members of this community, if I can give as much as I do to kids that I care and am passionate about, why can't we expect the same from a school board that claims to care about these kids? And why shouldn't we be expecting them to put kids and teachers ahead of their own? We should be ashamed of ourselves that we pay our school board members more than, more per hour than we do our teachers. Thanks for your time and remember to vote for the good of our schools, teachers, and kids.
I'm just a resident in the district. I find it very interesting, there was a gentleman, or perhaps it was a lady, who was up here talking about cherry picking. And it seems to me that a lot of times, the facts and figures that you're bringing are really cherry picking the right information. It was rather convenient to say that they're going to save a hundred thousand dollars over five years. That's twenty thousand dollars a year. I don't know, how many board members are there? Five? I, I don't, I honestly don't know. Seven? Okay, let's divide the twenty thousand by the seven, so you're going to take three thousand dollars. Really? I mean, really? I think it's not a fair comparison with the teachers. They're... I, I apologize for turning around and looking at the audience. I think it's not quite a fair comparison with the teachers either to say that it's forty-one dollars, because there are, there are starting teacher salaries and there are senior teacher salaries, I mean, just people who have been in the district a long time. There are teachers who make well over ninety thousand dollars a year. And then there are teachers who are making forty, forty-five, they're probably just out of college, they haven't been here that long. But the board has worked really hard, if anybody's paid attention, to bring up those salaries. And the way to do that is to pay the newer teachers more money and not pay the senior teachers as much in a salary raise. It's usually the way it's done in business. Usually what happens is there's a range. If you're at the bottom of the range, you get a bigger jump. If you're at the top of the range, you get red circled, and you don't get any kind of increase in the real world. So I think it's really unfair to use the teachers against the school board. And it seems to me that this whole situation is really unfortunate because the school district is doing really well. Germantown is in like the top fifteen or twenty percent in the state. Why do you think that is? Well, because we got some good teachers, but we also have some good administrators, and we also have a school board that's done their homework and kept everybody rowing in the same direction. So I think there's some credit that has to be given. This all seems quite punitive. It seems like maybe somebody didn't get a policy that they wanted, or maybe somebody didn't get a raise that they wanted, and so we're going to take it out on the school board. Seems kind of silly to me. I think the school board puts in a lot more time than you would believe, the gentleman who just spoke about his wife talking about how long she, the hours, the packets, the expulsions, all those things. You're not counting those in, those thirty-four hours. Oh, rather convenient. So I think when you look at the true facts and you think about it, we're not pitting teachers against school board. That's foolishness. We're just doing the same thing that we've done for years. They're not asking for more money. It's been five years. I mean, how many of you have not had a raise in five years? And yes, this is a volunteer. Yes, this is a volunteer thing, but it doesn't mean that they shouldn't be compensated for their time. And I think it's magnificent that the woman who spoke before me is so passionate about what she does, but that's a personal choice. And again, that's not comparable to this situation. You're trying to compare things and make convenient numbers. So I think that we should thank our school board, pass our resolution that says they just continue on the way they were, and get back to the business of making sure we have quality education in our school system.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good mor, good evening. Michael Peggitt, Germantown, a parent of two children in the district. We sit here tonight getting ready to vote on giving the school board members either a fair compensation that is in line with the average rate of pay for our teachers, or continuing to pay them an overinflated rate that is far greater than the average school board salaries in the area. I want to talk about board compensation versus teacher compensation, and to that subject, facts matter. Germantown has the lowest starting salary of the following sixteen districts: Cedarburg, Elm Brook, Fox Point, Franklin, Grafton, Greenfield, Hamilton, Menominee Falls, McQuantheansville, Nicolay Union, Oak Creek, Peewonkey, Shorewood, Slinger, West Bend, and Whitefish Bay. A forty thousand dollar starting salary that was set in 2014. The Board of Education set this salary. The Board of Education has refused to raise this starting salary ten times. Let me repeat that. For ten years, they have not raised this starting salary. We also have the lowest or worst benefits package of these same sixteen districts. There are two teachers making this, making the high salary of ninety-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars a year. That places us eighth of sixteen districts for the highest salary. Those teachers each have over three decades of teaching experience. So let's analyze that. If that teacher started at forty thousand dollars and it earns fifty-five thousand dollars and salary increases at thirty-three years, and that's an average of a sixteen hundred dollar a year raise, we have a business manager that received more than a ten thousand dollar raise last year, and over the course of her two years of employment, her salary has increased seventeen thousand dollars. It would take a teacher over ten years to obtain those levels. Facts matter, and it is a fact that we have a starting salary that is four thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars below the average, starting salary of the sixteen area districts I named. And we are eighth of sixteen for the highest salary, but that ninety-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars is still four thousand and sixty-three dollars less than the average high salary. The average salary of these area districts is sixty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. The Germantown average is sixty-three thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. We are five thousand four hundred and eight dollars below that average. Our teachers are paid below average compensation and our school board wants to be paid an above-average compensation.
Yes.
I, I'm not sure why we're staying here talking about teacher salaries. The agenda clearly states approved salaries and reimbursement of school board members.
Well, everybody's talked about, everybody's talked about compensation. So...
Yes, we need to stay the topic at hand, the school board salaries, not teacher salaries, please.
Everybody's talked about teacher salaries and the comparison, and the comparison, yeah, you just don't want to, you don't want to see the fact that, that what we're talking about here is compensation, equal compensation. Facts matter. The, the fact that our board has spent the past six weeks...
Yes.
I, I'd be a demand that we start following the agenda. This is ridiculous. We got better things to do.
Okay, I'll give you, I'll give you thirty seconds to wrap up, please.
Well, facts matter. The fact is our board has spent the past six weeks figuring out a way to override the will elector from October twenty-third. They spent time, energy, and district funds focused on their own compensation, and our teachers have not received their salary increases for this school year. Let me repeat that. Our Germantown teachers are working for the same pay they did last school year, where almost four months through the current school year, and this is what the board is focusing on, their own compensation, not the teachers'. Facts matter that we are losing teachers to the other districts due to the board's refusal to increase salaries to a respectable commensurate level, continuing to cut benefits year after year. The community is continually told that teachers are leaving to work closer to home. This is a false narrative. It can be a contributing factor when pay is involved, but teachers are leaving to make more money and work for districts that give them respect and treat them like the professionals they are. One of our elementary schools recently lost one of its speech pathologists. I sat and watched the personnel committee meeting where Mr. Urd expressed his frustration as to why that staff member was quitting mid-year and asking why. I know why. It was not to be closer to home, as claimed. It was for thirteen thousand dollars more per year for the same position she held in Germantown.
Okay, there's your time. Thank you. Please state your name.
Melanie Smythe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
She was here.
I don't know if...
The chair recognizes, please state your name.
Okay. My name is Amelia Antrim. I am the parent of two students here in the school district, one at MacArthur Elementary and one at Kennedy Middle School. I don't have a prepared statement, so I'm sorry if this is a little bit all over the place. I just wanted to say that I, I understand that we are not here necessarily to talk about teacher salaries, that the, the board is discussing their own salaries. However, I will say that the people here, the residents of Germantown, are taxpayers. The money for our schools and for our school board comes from taxes, and I would like to remind everybody that one of the things that people look for when they move into a new city is they look at the school districts that they are moving into. And one of the things that attracted me to living in Germantown was the school district. I've had wonderful experiences with the teachers and the administration in our schools. My children have special needs and the school has been wonderful, certainly compared to my own experiences in those areas as a student. And I, I think, I, I would ask people to remember that it is our teachers and our aides and the people working in the schools that make those students great and make the experience for those students great and help with those learning outcomes. People are moving to districts because of the quality of their schools, not because of the makeup of their school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melanie Smythe. I'm a Germantown resident. I don't have children in the district, but it's an important component of our community and very happy to see a big turnout here. I would like to call the question so that we can start voting.
So to call the question, the, the question before us is a motion to amend, and we can do this two ways. The chair can ask if, if we're ready for the question, or, or we can have a formal vote to call the question, which requires a two-thirds approval to cut off debate. So if the chair wants to ask the assembly here, the electors, if we're ready to call the question, he can do that, and if there's no objection, then we can vote.
Okay. Are we ready to call the vote?
Yes.
Point of information, since I was the one that initiated the motion, do I have time for a rebuttal?
No, thank you.
If there's further discussion, but we did call the question now on the amendment, so we'll vote on the motion to amend the original motion.
Okay, the voting will commence.
Make sure you read the exact motion.
Yes, we are voting on the amendment. I'll let Mr. Dr. Reuter read that for us. We are voting to change the original motion to the amended motion at this point.
The amended motion is presented, that was chaired with, to me, by Ms. Garvis. She, I moved to amend the motion by replacing the annual salary of five thousand four hundred eighty dollars for all board members with a new annual salary of one thousand four hundred for all board members. The salary is equal to thirty-four hours of estimated meeting time at the current average hourly teacher compensation in the district of forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Can I have a point of order? Was that considered two-thirds of vote for the call of the question? Because the question was called, we need to resolve that the question was called in order to move on, do we not? So if you took that, I mean, I do, I agree, I agree we want to vote, but if we didn't go through calling the question and you assume that the vocal votes was two-thirds of a vote, then that is still nebulously out there and I really don't want that to screw up the rest of the vote.
I'm not, I, I didn't follow, if you want to say that again, I didn't follow what you...
So this, someone came up and called the question. That kind of puts us at a stop. And then he asked everybody here, who, everybody wants to vote now, we know that, but if we leave the question being called out there, someone could go back and say this was not Robert's Rules. So if our chair has said from the, hey, everybody want to vote, and he assumes that two-thirds vote, which I think almost ninety-nine percent or whatever, was said, then I just want that to be noted, that the question was called, it was approved by the chair, that that question has been called, and now we are moving forward with the vote. I don't want to have to do this another night.
Okay. If anyone has an objection to calling the question, they can raise the objection right now, and then we can do a two-thirds vote to call the question before we vote on the motion.
Well, the lady had called the question, so that stopped everything, according to Robert's Rules. Did it need to be seconded? Did it wasn't seconded? Or, I just want to do it right tonight. I don't want to have to come back. We, nobody wants to mess it up. So Sarah can second it.
Okay, then what we'll do is we'll take a vote on whether we're going to take the vote.
Correct, correct, correct.
We'll have everyone stand in favor of taking the vote, and then we'll do the nays. All those in favor? Okay, please sit down, and all those against. Okay, the chair recognizes two-thirds. Thank you. Now we have the...
Motion to amend.
The motion to amend, and we're going to use ballot number one, yes or no, to amend the original motion with the new amendment that was just read by Dr. Reuter.
No, someone has already voted. Is that a problem? Somebody wants to have their ballot in already?
That was just sitting in there?
Ms. Garvis, are you willing to take your vote back and re-vote?
Sure.
Do we do a hand wave?
Okay.
If anyone has an objection to calling the question, they can raise the objection right now, and then we can do a two-thirds vote to call the question before we vote on the motion.
Well, the lady had called the question, so that stopped everything, according to Robert's rules. Did it need to be seconded, did it wasn't seconded, or? I just want to do it right tonight, I don't want to have to come back. We, nobody wants to mess it up. So Sarah can second it.
Okay, then what we'll do is we'll take a vote on whether we're going to take the vote.
Correct, correct, correct.
We'll have everyone stand in favor of taking the vote, and then we'll do the nays. All those in favor?
It looks like you're...
It's W H G.
Okay, please sit down, and all those against. Okay, the chair recognizes two-thirds, thank you.
So now, I've got the motion to...
Now we have the...
Motion to amend.
The motion to amend, and we're going to use ballot number one, yes or no, to amend the original motion with the new amendment that was just read by Dr. Reuter.
No, someone has already voted, is that a problem? Somebody wants to have a vote with their ballot in already?
It was Garvis.
Yeah.
How, that was just sitting in there?
That's fine, I don't put that in there.
Ms. Garvis, are you willing to take your vote back and re-vote?
Sure.
Do you mind many of the people who need a few ballots?
Yes. Yes, if anyone needs a ballot because they've used their ballot one, please you bring your pal, your, your packet up for an exchange, if you need that ballot. But please...
She's going to take it back.
Yep.
If you need a replacement number one ballot, please bring your packet up. Thank you all, last call for ballots, we are going to begin the counting.
So then, I guess regardless of the outcome of this, we have to have at least one more vote. Either voting up or down. If, if this, if this is passed, then we basically would substitute that number and vote for this motion.
We'll do the yeses first. Yes, one. Yes, two. Yes, three. Yes, four. Yes, five. Yes, six. Yes, seven. Yes, eight. Yes, nine. Yes, ten. Yes, eleven. Yes, twelve. Yes, thirteen. Yes, fourteen. Yes, fifteen. Yes, sixteen. Yes, seventeen. Yes, eighteen. Yes, nineteen. Yes, twenty. Yes, twenty-one. Yes, twenty-two. Yes, twenty-three. Yes, twenty-four. Yes, twenty-five. Yes, twenty-six. Yes, twenty-seven. Yes, twenty-eight. Yes, twenty-nine. Yes, thirty. Yes, thirty-one. Yes, thirty-two. Yes, thirty-three. Yes, thirty-four. Yes, thirty-five. Yes, thirty-six. Yes, thirty-seven. Yes, thirty-eight. Yes, thirty-nine. Yes, forty-one. Yes, forty-two. Yes, forty-three. Yes, forty-four. Yes, forty-five. Yes, forty-six. Yes, forty-seven. Yes, forty-eight. Yes, forty-nine. Yes, fifty. Yes, fifty-one. Yes, fifty-three. Yes, fifty-four. Yes, fifty-five. Yes, fifty-six. Yes, fifty-seven. Yes, fifty-eight. Yes, fifty-nine. Yes, sixty. Yes, sixty-one. Yes, sixty-two. Yes, sixty-three. Yes, sixty-four. Yes, sixty-five. Yes, sixty-six. Yes, sixty-seven. Yes, sixty-eight. Yes, sixty-nine. Yes, seventy. Yes, seventy-one. Yes, seventy-two. Yes, seventy-three. Yes, seventy-four. Yes, seventy-five. Yes, seventy-six. Yes, seventy-seven. Yes, seventy-eight. Yes, seventy-nine. Yes, eighty. Yes, eighty-one. Yes, eighty-two. Yes, eighty-three. Yes, eighty-four. Yes, eighty-five. Yes, eighty-six. Yes, eighty-seven. Yes, eighty-eight. Yes, eighty-nine. Yes, ninety. Yes, ninety-one. Yes, ninety-two. Yes, ninety-three. Yes, ninety-four. Yes, ninety-five. Yes, ninety-six. Yes, ninety-seven. Yes, ninety-eight. Yes, ninety-nine. Yes, one hundred. Yes, one hundred-one. Yes, one hundred-two. Yes, one hundred-three. Yes, one hundred-four. Yes, one hundred-five. Yes, one hundred-six. Yes, one hundred-seven. Yes, one hundred-eight. Yes, one hundred-nine. Yes, one hundred-ten. Yes, one hundred-eleven. Yes, one hundred-twelve. Yes, one hundred-thirteen. Yes, one hundred-fourteen. Yes, one hundred-fifteen. Yes, one hundred-sixteen. Yes, one hundred-seventeen. Yes, one hundred-eighteen. Yes, one hundred-nineteen. Yes, one hundred-twenty. Yes, one hundred-twenty-one. Yes, one hundred-twenty-two. Yes, one hundred, one hundred-twenty-three. Yes, one hundred-twenty-four. And yes, one hundred-twenty-five. No one. No two. No three. No four. No five. No six. No seven. No eight. No nine. No ten. No eleven. No twelve. No thirteen. No fourteen. No fifteen. No sixteen. No seventeen. No eighteen. No nineteen. No twenty. No twenty-one. No twenty-two. No twenty-three. No twenty-four. No twenty-five. No twenty-six. No twenty-seven. No twenty-eight. No twenty-nine. No thirty. No thirty-one. No thirty-two. No thirty-three. No thirty-four. No thirty-five. No thirty-six. No thirty-seven. No thirty-eight. No thirty-nine. No, no forty-one. No vote. No forty-two. No forty-three. No forty-four. No forty-five. No forty-six. No forty-seven. No forty-eight. No forty-nine. No fifty. No fifty-one. No fifty-two. No fifty-three. No fifty-four. No fifty-five. No fifty-six. No fifty-seven. No fifty-eight. No fifty-nine. No sixty. No sixty-two. No sixty-three. No sixty-four. No sixty-five. No sixty-six. No sixty-seven. No sixty-eight. No sixty-nine. No seventy. No seventy-one. No seventy-two. No seventy-three. No seventy-four. No seventy-five. No seventy-six. No seventy-seven. No seventy-eight. No seventy-nine. No eighty. No eighty-one. No eighty-two. No eighty-three. No eighty-four. No eighty-five. No eighty-six. No eighty-seven. No eighty-eight. No eighty-nine. No ninety. No ninety-one. No ninety-two. No ninety-three. No ninety-four. No ninety-five. No ninety-six. No ninety-seven. No ninety-eight. No ninety-nine. No one hundred. No one oh one. No one oh two. No one oh three. No one oh four. No one oh five. No one oh six. No one oh seven. No one oh eight. No one oh nine. No ten, no one ten. No one eleven. No one twelve. No one thirteen. No one fourteen. No one fifteen. No one sixteen. No one seventeen. No one eighteen. No one nineteen. No one twenty. No one twenty-one. No one twenty-two. No one twenty-three. No one twenty-four. No one twenty-five. No one twenty-six. No one twenty-seven. No one twenty-eight. No one twenty-nine. No one thirty. No one thirty-one. No one thirty-two. No one thirty-three. No one thirty-four. No one thirty-five. No one thirty-six. No one thirty-seven. No one thirty-eight. No one thirty-nine. No one forty. No one forty-one. No one forty-two. No one forty-three. No one forty-four. No one forty-five. No one forty-six. No one forty-seven. No one forty-eight. No one forty-nine. No one fifty. No one fifty-one. No one fifty-two. No one fifty-three. No one fifty-four. No one fifty-five. No one fifty-six. No one fifty-seven.
Okay, the final vote, we have one twenty-five yes, one fifty-seven no, with zero abstentions. That amendment to the original motion fails. Do we have any objection to calling the vote on the original motion? Okay, at this time, we will use ballot number two to vote on the original resolution, which reads, I'll remind everyone...
Brian, I have it up here. We gotta seal all the votes and put those away.
Okay.
There's the, there's Tracy's. Here it is. I got it. Yeah, but that's the fixed one.
This is the one we read?
Yeah. Ignore my cross-out, because we don't have to do that anymore. What was that, one fifty-seven or one twenty-three? Yeah. Two twenty-five. Do you want to remove the standing? Come on, hold on. Do I? I'll do it better this time, okay?
If there's no objection, can we do a standing vote?
Do a paper. Just, we need, we, I want the record. We'll do paper.
Okay, we have an objection.
Ballot two. Ballot two, direct.
There was no objection. Right, there was no objection. So, all right, we're going to do paper ballots, and we're going to do...
Paper ballots.
Yes, that's what I, I'm, I'm explaining, we're going to use ballot number two for the following motion. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the electors of Germantown School District, Washington County, State of Wisconsin authorize the school board's salary shall remain at five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars annually for each school board member. Be it further resolved, the school board member shall be reimbursed by the district for the payment of actual and necessary expenses of the school board member when traveling or performing duties outside the district. Yes or no on ballot two, please?
Point of clarification?
Yes, Mr. Barney.
I, I believe you stated five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, but the original motion was five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, point of clarification, five thousand four hundred and eighty, I had a cross-off on here, so I misread that, my, my mistake. Five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars annually for each school board member, correction?
Ballot number two.
Ballot number two. Yes, no, or abstain? Yes, no, or abstain?
Good catch, Tom. That's my bad. I scratched a little on there.
Thank you. Ray?
I don't wanna let score. Don't tell me. I'm recording it.
Yeah.
What's that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
I'm recording it. Don't say anything. I don't wanna know.
Thank you all. Last call for voting. We're gonna begin the tally.
All right, we'll begin with the yes counts. Yes, one. Yes, two. Yes, three. Yes, four. Yes, five. Yes, six. No vote. Yes, seven. Yes, eight. Yes, nine. Yes, ten. Yes, eleven. Yes, twelve. Yes, thirteen. Yes, fourteen. Yes, fifteen. Yes, sixteen. Yes, seventeen. Yes, eighteen. Yes, nineteen. Yes, twenty. Yes, twenty-one. Yes, twenty-two. Yes, twenty-three. Yes, twenty-four. Yes, twenty-five. Yes, twenty-six. Yes, twenty-seven. Yes, twenty-eight. Yes, twenty-nine. Yes, thirty. Yes, thirty-one. Yes, thirty-two. Yes, thirty-three. Yes, thirty-four. Yes, thirty-five. Yes, thirty-six. Yes, thirty-seven. Yes, thirty-eight. Yes, thirty-nine. Yes, forty. Yes, forty-one. Yes, forty-two. Yes, forty-three. Yes, forty-four. Yes, forty-five. Yes, forty-six. Yes, forty-seven. Yes, forty-eight. Yes, forty-nine. Yes, fifty. Yes, fifty-one. Yes, fifty-two. Yes, fifty-three. Yes, fifty-four. Yes, fifty-five. Yes, fifty-six. Yes, fifty-seven. Yes, fifty-eight. Yes, fifty-nine. Yes, sixty. Yes, sixty-one. Yes, sixty-two. Yes, sixty-three. Yes, sixty-four. Yes, sixty-five. Yes, sixty-six. Yes, sixty-seven. Yes, sixty-eight. Yes, sixty-nine. Yes, seventy. Yes, seventy-one. Yes, seventy-two. Yes, seventy-three. Yes, seventy-four. Yes, seventy-five. Yes, seventy-six. Yes, seventy-seven. Yes, seventy-eight. Yes, seventy-nine. Yes, eighty. Yes, eighty-one. Yes, eighty-two. Yes, eighty-three. Yes, eighty-four. Yes, eighty-five. Yes, eighty-six. Yes, eighty-seven. Yes, eighty-eight. Yes, eighty-nine. Yes, ninety. Yes, ninety-one. Yes, ninety-two. Yes, ninety-three. Yes, ninety-four. Yes, ninety-five. Yes, ninety-six. Yes, ninety-seven. Yes, ninety-eight. Yes, ninety-nine. Yes, one hundred. Yes, one oh one. Yes, one oh two. Yes, one oh three. Yes, one oh four. Yes, one oh five. Yes, one oh six. Yes, one oh seven. Yes, one oh eight. Yes, one oh nine. Yes, one ten. Yes, one eleven. Yes, one twelve. Yes, one thirteen. Yes, one fourteen. Yes, one fifteen. Yes, one sixteen. Yes, one seventeen. Yes, one eighteen. Yes, one nineteen. Yes, one twenty. Yes, one twenty-one. Yes, one twenty-two. Yes, one twenty-three. Yes, one twenty-four. Yes, one twenty-five. Yes, one twenty-six. Yes, one twenty-seven. Yes, one twenty-eight. Yes, one twenty-nine. Yes, one thirty. Yes, one thirty-one. Yes, one thirty-two. Yes, one thirty-three. Yes, one thirty-four. Yes, one thirty-five. Yes, one thirty-six. Yes, one thirty-seven. Yes, one thirty-eight. Yes, one thirty-nine. Yes, one forty. Yes, one forty-one. Yes, one forty-two. Yes, one forty-three. Yes, one forty-four. Yes, one forty-five. Yes, one forty-six. Yes, one forty-seven. Yes, one forty-eight. Yes, one forty-nine. Yes, one fifty. Yes, one fifty-one. Yes, one fifty-two. Yes, one fifty-three. Yes, one fifty-four. Yes, one fifty-five. Yes, one fifty-six. Yes, one fifty-seven. Yes, one fifty-eight. Yes, one fifty-nine. Yes, one sixty. Yes, one sixty-one. No votes. No one. No two. No three. No four. No five. No six. No seven. No eight. No nine. No ten. No eleven. No twelve. No thirteen. No fourteen. No fifteen. No sixteen. No seventeen. No eighteen. No nineteen. No twenty. No twenty-one. No twenty-two. No twenty-three. No twenty-four. No twenty-five. No twenty-six. No twenty-seven. No twenty-eight. No twenty-nine. No thirty. No thirty-one. No thirty-two. No thirty-three. No thirty-four. No thirty-five. No thirty-six. No thirty-seven. No thirty-eight. No thirty-nine. No forty. No forty-one. No forty-two. No forty-three. No forty-four. No forty-five. No forty-six. No forty-seven. No forty-eight. No forty-nine. No fifty. No fifty-one. No fifty-two. No fifty-three. No fifty-four. No fifty-five. No fifty-six. No fifty-seven. No fifty-eight. No fifty-nine. No sixty. No sixty-one. No sixty-two. No sixty-three. No sixty-four. No sixty-five. No sixty-six. No sixty-seven. No sixty-eight. No sixty-nine. No seventy. No seventy-one. No seventy-two. No seventy-three. No seventy-four. No seventy-five. No seventy-six. No seventy-seven. No seventy-eight. No seventy-nine. No eighty. No eighty-one. No eighty-two. No eighty-three. No eighty-four. No eighty-five. No eighty-six. No eighty-seven. No eighty-eight. No eighty-nine. No ninety. No ninety-one. No ninety-two. No ninety-three. No ninety-four. No ninety-five. No ninety-six. No ninety-seven. No ninety-eight. No ninety-nine. No one hundred. No one oh one. No one oh two. No one oh three. No one oh four. No one oh five. No one oh six. No one oh seven. No one oh eight. No one oh nine. No one ten. No eleven. No one eleven. No one twelve. No one thirteen. Abstain. One.
Okay, the final vote on the original motion. Yes, one sixty-one. No, one thirteen. We had one no vote and one abstain. That resolution passes. We're not at item four. I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a second?
Who was it by?
Uh... Sarah. Second by... Russ Hewitt? Any discussion? We'll do this as a standing vote. All those in favor of adjourning, please stand. Opposed, please stand. We are adjourned at 7:42. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. Please drive home safely.